Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Welcome to downtown Dennison, beautiful downtown Dennison, for our meeting tonight, for September 3rd, 2024. We welcome you, and at this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Larry Goodman of the New Hope Christian Fellowship. Larry, if you'll come up, we would appreciate your invocation. Thank you. Is Pastor Goodman here? All right. Since he's not here, I'll invite Councilman James Thorne, if he would, to please open our session with a prayer.
Let us pray. O God, our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. Thank you for witnessing us up this morning. We ask you to give us our sins and forgive those who have sinned against us. We pray, oh God, that this meeting is what, that you would come in and help us tonight as we discuss things of the city. Lord, we thank you for your presence. We thank you for all the wonderful things that you've done for us, starting at each one of our households. We pray, oh God, tonight, that everything is done decent and in order. We pray that everything is done with respect for one another. We pray, oh God, that you be happy by the way we react tonight. In your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Chief Jacks of the Dennison Fire Department will lead us in our place for allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Chief Jacks and Pastor Thorne. The item two of this agenda is public comments. Please know that citizens may speak on action item listed below on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival prior to the council meeting and reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below will be heard when the specific hearing occurs. Because these are public hearings tonight, you do not have had to complete a request to speak card. So whoever wants to speak will be able to speak, and we'll have three-minute turns on the, once we get to the agenda items. Item number three is the, is the congete, congete, consent agenda. Hard night. Consent agenda, and I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second. Motion by Councilwoman Teresa Adams, and a second by Spencer Redwine. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now, for what most of you are here for tonight. We have two, two public hearings tonight, and if you don't mind, let me explain this. It seems totally backwards, but that's the way the state law makes us do this. First thing we're going to do is item A, we will approve a budget, and then item B, we'll have a discussion on the tax rates. So if you want to hold your comments until item B, that's fine, but by state law, we have to approve the budget first, and then what will happen is if there is a tax rate change, we will come back, it will come back to the meeting next week with an amended budget, not next week, two weeks from now, but the agenda or the budget will be amended to go along with whatever, if there is a change in the tax rate by the council. So item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance adopting the City of Dennison budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending on September 30, 2025, and appropriating the funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget. Call on now Ms. Lori Alsibow.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Give me one moment to see if I can get this working. Whoop, going backwards.
Somebody said down is up and up is down. Is that still the same?
I'm here this evening to present the fiscal year '25 budget for approval. As you know, the budget is funded primarily through property tax, and although, as you had mentioned, although our property tax rate has not been adopted, state law requires adoption of the budget before adoption of the tax rate. So therefore, tonight, I'm proposing a budget based on the same tax rate as last year without a tax increase. Should a different tax rate be adopted this evening, we will bring this back as an amended budget for approval at the next meeting, and that will, the changes will depend on the conversations tonight and the tax rate that is approved. Going backwards again. So in the general operating, well, let me back up. The current tax rate is .652034. Again, this is the rate that the proposed budget is being presented with, and even though this budget is being presented, that is being presented is balanced, it will be difficult, if not impossible, to maintain. Should any unforeseen event occur, we will be strained to meet our obligations with the limited days of reserves that we have. In the general operating fund, we budgeted to end '24 with a small surplus, but are projected to end with a $570,000 deficit, $570,000 deficit, which has dropped our days of reserve down to 54 days. The fiscal year '25 proposed budget would end fiscal year '25 with a two-day gain over that, putting us at 56 days of reserve. Utility fund, we budgeted to end with 60 days, and we are projected to be at 52 days. Based on this budget, we would end fiscal year '25 at 55 days. So you have seen this slide before. These are the accounts in the general operating fund that have seen a significant increase this year and have gone over budget. These accounts total around $1.5 million. In the utility fund, you have the same situation, and these overages total a little over $1 A large part of these overages are attributed to inflation. I pulled this inflation chart from the state comptroller's website. It shows inflation, inflation for both Texas and the U.S. since the year 2020, and you can see how it has climbed. And according to the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas, Texas ranks the sixth highest state in the nation for inflation. So for the budget, for capital needs, this budget will finance 445,000 in general fund capital needs, but does not allocate anything toward utility fund capital needs. For personnel, it will support two police officer positions, one plan reviewer position, and funds a permit tech position. And for fiscal year '25, for streets, this budget includes over $1.6 million in general operating funds, approximately $980,000 in street funds, and it also includes $500,000 set aside for an obligation with the state, with Texas Dodd, for the Highway 75 project. That total project's around $3 million, so each year, we're aiming to set a little bit aside for that project. We also have $1.5 million remaining in ARP funds. These are designated for the streets listed on the slide. This was a one-time funding source. It, it's not a reoccurring funding source. So this concludes the proposed budget presented for your approval this evening. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
And this budget is, is at a zero percent, or zero cent tax rate?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the same tax rate that we currently, or had in last year?
All right, thank you. Be, this is a public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak for or against this, this budget, not the tax rate yet, but for this budget, we will open the hearing now, and if you would like to, please come to the front and state your name, address, and your comments. We'll have three minutes, and is there anyone that wishes to come up and speak at this time? Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
Darren Lathan, 930 DuBois. I just had one quick question on this part, and that would be, it looked like there were about, like the big shortfall, it seemed like there was about $3 million in other non-tax revenue on the income side last year that's a zero this. I assume part of that was what we just heard about the ARP fund, maybe? I don't know, or was that transfers? That was, that was probably my biggest question, and I don't know if we have an answer for that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Name is George Mason. I'm at 2117 Park Village in Dennison. My understanding, the budget you're passing right now, or the one that's proposed, is kind of like no pay raises, no new people, except for the ones who are mentioned, no new equipment. That doesn't seem like a very good way to move forward, and I don't like paying taxes anymore than the next guy. Fortunately, I'm not going to be affected, I'm, I've got a homestead exemption. However, I like what you've done with the parks, I like what's happening with Main Street, I want to see it go ahead, and to do that, you've got to increase the tax more than what you've done in this proposed budget. So I'm in favor of whatever you decide to do. I encourage you to try to go the extra mile and make things happen in this town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Lori, if you'd come back up, please. I just want to reiterate, this seems backwards, totally backwards to me, and it is, but it's state law, we have to pass a budget first, and then we pass a tax rate.
That is correct. Yes, that is correct.
And so the budget that we're presenting assumes only the, the same level of income as we had the previous year. Is that correct?
Has the same tax rate as last year, correct?
Same tax rate.
Yes. No increase.
So for us to do more, we have, we would have to work at the tax rate, and that will come in item B on this section four agenda. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Are there any others to speak on item A of agenda item number four? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Council, comments on the budget for agenda item A?
I did have a question. Lori, I have a question. Can we, can you go back to that last slide with the streets budget? I know we had a conversation about the sidewalks. I think it was modified from the last time that we spoke. Was that adjusted?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that it was a project that was, I guess, moved for just general street maintenance? Is that kind of what happened? Because I think that overall, total budget is the same. I think it just...
Correct. The sidewalks program has a breakdown of two different projects within that amount of 275,000. So a portion of that is for sidewalks.
What are those two projects?
The Ike Hike Trail, or sidewalk, I guess you call it, project, and then the 75,000 is for the sidewalks.
Okay. So 75 is for sidewalks, and the other 200,000 is for Ike Hike?
Yes. Originally, it was 400,000, but we reallocated that, yes. And then a portion into overlay as well, went from that project into overlay.
Is that not a TERS allowable expense, the Ike Hike?
I'm not aware of it being a TERS. It would depend if it could fund it. I don't know if it could support that project or not. But a portion of that should be, you know, within the TERS, could be.
Is Ronnie here?
He is.
Ronnie's on the back row. Oh, hiding back there, Ronnie. Staffing at the water treatment plant you mentioned the other day is at a quasi-critical level right now. What's our buffer? We lose one more, and we're having trouble providing water to the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay? And it's not losing them because Dennison is the wrong place to work, it's that we have competitors, and TI is going to use water plant guys, and so in this budget, it does not show a single person coming to refill your roster on that. That puts us in a little bit of a bind.
Well, we have, we have three positions funded, we're just holding two out, and I believe, I don't know whether I'm correct or if I'm wrong, but I think he authorized that we go ahead and build one of them, which is in his budget right now that Lori just presented.
The onboarding process is months long for somebody that's coming into a skilled position like that, I presume?
Yes, sir.
So if we hire one and we lose one, we are back, that's critical. And the same with the police department, right? We had, we got two on the books from the grant, but then we just sadly lost one, so we have a net single at this point.
Correct.
Mr. Thomas, did that answer your question?
It did answer your question, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Lori. Any other comments from council? Is there a motion to approve this budget?
Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance adopting the City of Dennison budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending on September 30th, 2025, and appropriating the funds for various funds and purposes of such budget.
Have a motion by Mayor Proteam Adams, a second by Pastor Thorne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Sorry, this requires a roll call vote.
Yes, ma'am, sorry. Thank you.
All right, does I state your name? If you please say yes or no. Mayor Proteam Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtrite?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Massey?
Yes.
Councilmember Redwine?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we move into item B for the public hearings, and this is receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of the Grayson County Appraisal District in the amount of $2.760800037, which is $2.76 billion, levying the ad valorem taxes on the City of Dennison on all property, both personal and real, in the City of Dennison for the year 2024, in the amount of 0.652034 for each $100 of assessed valuation, and providing for the apportionment of such ad valorem taxes. So Ms. Alsibow.
Okay, the budget that was just proposed and approved is supported by the current tax rate of .652034. As I mentioned previously, this will be a difficult budget to maintain, and should there be any unforeseen events, we may have some hard decisions to make. Here we have our tax rate history from 1980 to current. Our tax rate has stayed relatively stable for the last decade, and has remained at the same rate for the past five years. To give you some history, the tax rate in 1980 on the left was $1.05, and records show that in 1973, it was $1.35. This slide shows the revenue generated from a six cent through a 10 cent tax increase. The annual increase to the homeowners would range between $120 to $201. If you recall, one penny generates around $259,000 in revenue for the city. So here you can see the benefits of each additional penny that is approved. Each penny can affect how many positions that we hire, additional funding for reserves, the amount allocated to parks and street maintenance, and repairs to facilities, and that's just to name a few. And then lastly, I would like to point out our tax dollars at work in regards to public safety. We've seen a year-over-year decrease in crime rates, thanks to the Dennison Police Department, and our fire department has earned the city an ISO one, or ISO rating of one. For those that don't know, that out of more than 50,000 fire departments nationally, only 411 have this rating, and it can help to reduce home and commercial insurance rates. So that concludes my presentation. Tonight's action requires council to approve the assessment role by the certified, or the certified role by the Grayson Appraisal District, and approval of a tax rate for 2024.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we open it for public comments, I'd like to just make a couple of comments myself and invite any other council men or women to make a comment or two. We, we seem to be caught in, in the perfect storm. We have growth, which is expensive. We have record inflation, which hurts everyone, and we have interest rates that are, that have been raised 11 times in between 2022 and 2023. Consequently, it has not, it, it has not caused the city to be unaffected. We are affected by what's going on in our economy, and we've seen that in many of our chemicals that we use to treat water, among other things. So in our growth, the numbers that I came up with since 2015, we've had over 1,500 new homes built in our community. Back up on that. That's permits. Over 1,500 permits since 2015. We've had over 592 apartment units completed, and we've had 315 duplex permits approved, and that totals 2,400 new housing units in our community. So we definitely have the growth, and the growth requires services as well. Is there any other council that would like to make a statement or a comment before we open to public hearing? All right. Thank you, Ms. Lori. At this time, we will open the public hearing for discussion on the tax rate to be established by the City of Dennison. If you, anyone that wants to speak can and may speak, we're allowing three minutes per person, and we appreciate you all for being here. Number, I'll just go down these request to speak cards, and then after that, we'll, we'll invite anyone else that would like to come forward and speak to do so. First, I have a, have a Becky Isbell that has signed in to for a request to speak. Ms. Isbell, do you want to come forward?
One of my questions is that we have two cities that are located close to Sherman and Pottsboro, and our tax rates are already higher than their tax rates are at this present time, and I wondered how that we could justify raising it more for the people in our community when those communities function with that type of tax rate? And so that's one of the questions I wanted to bring up, and I'm a retired teacher, so it doesn't affect me as much, but I do work with a lot of people that are not retired. They're young with families, they're already crushed by the inflation that we have right now, trying to feed their families, trying to put gas in their car, trying to maintain a job, and yet, you know, here, we have more money that is coming out of our pockets, their pockets, and, and I just am concerned for those people moving forward, you know, how this is going to affect them, and I understand that we have things that need to be done for our city, but please take some empathy on your families that are here. New homes being built for these young families, and they're struggling so much now as it is. Please take pity on those people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. I would say that one of our sources of income is sales tax, and our city to our south has a phenomenal sales tax engine. It's called Town Center, and I, I have been told that of the tax revenues generated at that location, approximately 60, that's six, zero percent, come from outside the City of Sherman. So we have a great deal of sales tax leakage for people who go south to shop. So we're gonna, we're urging everyone that can to please shop locally, and then if you happen to shop online, Amazon and other retailers now pay the portion of the sales tax to the zip code in which it is delivered. So if you can't find it locally, if you order it online and have it shipped to your home, that is a big benefit to the City of Dennison. And sales tax, we're just not as fortunate as Sherman, geographically located, and with a, with all of the large commercial businesses that you see there in Town Center. So that's one, one thing that they have a, a great advantage over us on. That's just my comment. Next, Tiffany Drake. Is Tiffany here? And it was Drake. Please come forward, give your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Crowley and council members. Thank you for your audience this evening. My name is Tiffany Drake. I live at 892 Harshbarger in Sadler. I am a, a registered nurse and a Dennison native. I grew up here my whole life and graduated Dennison High as a yellow jacket in 1985, and attended Grayson County College for my nursing degree. Today, I am a candidate to be your State House Representative for District 62. I come to you tonight to talk to you about household budgets. The national company Zillow partnered with the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau to complete a nationwide study to see what it costs families to live these days, and I have those results here. I know you cannot see them, but they can be found on my website, but they found that the average cost of housing, whether rent, lease, or buy, $1,958, almost $2,000. That's a lot of money for working families. I don't have to explain to you what's happened to wages over the last 30 years, the cost of groceries has doubled and tripled, the cost of homeowner's insurance has exploded. Dennisonians simply cannot shoulder one more cost of living increase. Last year, I recognized the problem of affordable housing, and I went to work developing a 10-point plan, which can be found on my website, drakefortexashouse.com. It is packed with measures that are designed to make housing more accessible and affordable for all. The Texas Legislature is already forming a committee in Austin to address affordable housing. Any of you who may have worked me, worked with me over all of the years that I've been here know that I am someone you can count on, that I have a lot of determination, and I am a problem solver. So I implore of you to give me a chance to go to Austin and try to bring down the cost of living before imposing a new cost of living increase via this tax. In addition, I am circulating this petition to repeal House Bill 2717 passed two years ago by the State of Texas, it is known as the Death Star. This is the legislation that stripped municipalities of the power to enact regulations they felt are best for their community. Without this constraint, municipalities could find more creative ways to generate needed revenue. You can find this on my website, drakefortexashouse.com. If you are in agreement, please visit and sign. We need you to help us, we need you to give us hope, and we need you to lift us up. We are creative people.
Thank you.
I invite you to join hands with me for common ground and common sense.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. The next one I have is Darren Lathan. Mr. Lathan, if you'd come back up, please.
Good evening again, Darren Lathan, 930 DuBois. Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry, I'm your problem child. When I first heard the news story about this tax increase, I was prepared to come down here red-faced and pound a podium. When I read the minutes this afternoon, it really did a lot... When I read the minutes this afternoon, it really did a lot to help me out. And whoever's keeping your minutes, whoever it is, I don't know who it is.
She needs a raise.
There, there you go. They are really good minutes. I really felt like I got the gist of the conversation, a, a, a good feel for the points. And so, but there were a couple of, there are some questions, I think, here that are willing, that, that I think need to be addressed. And that is, what is it about Dennison inflation that makes it special? I mean, that inflation is also in Pottsboro and Bells and Van Alstine. And I won't even mention that city to the south in light of the football game this week. But, and also their engine is, they're further ahead in this economic cycle than we are. And I understand that. I know where we are, and we're a little bit behind. I think what would help a lot is just a little better communication here. I'm not, I haven't seen anything other than the story that said, Dennison Council proposed or approved a 10-cent tax increase. And I really didn't get any kind of an explanation other than that broad inflation explanation. And it doesn't really address, it doesn't address, many of the things that, Mayor, you addressed in your opening comments for this agenda item, I thought. I think if you guys could put that out, it would help a lot. There's, there's kind of, there's two things. There's what should be and what is. After reading your agenda and reading the material, going through the budget, I cannot come here and ask you not to do the tax increase you've proposed. I think the cost of living adjustment, as Councilman Massey mentioned with the water folks earlier, is critical if you don't want to lose people. And we know losing people is expensive because you have to go out and recruit new people. You have to train new people. I think what would help, though, is some assurance from you, our elected representatives, you guys coming forward and saying, hey, I do not think we should live in the top 10% of municipal tax rates in the state of Texas. And I, as a representative, your elected representative, will work to get that down. That would help me a lot, understanding that this hopefully is just to get us over a hump. That I get. But having some concrete plans that you can point to, understanding you can't bind future councils, situations are fluid, things change, I get all that. But just to have kind of a, a plan in place that says, I heard that, that says, we're, we're working on getting us back down to normal, and we're not going to stay in this zone and live there. And I thank you for your attention. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lathan. Appreciate your comments. Yes, Councilman Massey would like to make a comment.
So, Mr. Lathan, I've, I've lived through four of these stories where you have a town where the main employer leaves, and they go through an economic downturn. And the recipe is fairly common, right? The railroad leaves, the military leaves, the textile plants leave. And in that next period, you see a bunch of antique shops come in because the buildings become cheap and they're pretty. And then after they cannibalize one another. Then the next one is the retailers come in and they poorly monetize their square foot usage. And then finally, a restaurant comes in. That's why we came, is I felt like the trajectory Dennison was on, the tailwinds that are coming, whether we want them or not, are predicting that with a couple of nodes in downtown, you could revitalize the downtown, which would then contribute to the revitalization of the city. In each one of those case studies, Washington, North Carolina, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, Meridian, Mississippi, and Dennison, Texas, there's about a three-year window when you go from poor economic performance to accelerated, virtually unsustainable growth rate. 4.1% is about everything you can throw at it to keep it going. And we're projected to be somewhere in that upper three, four range on a city that's got 100-year-old pipes and so forth. So I am fiscally conservative. I don't like paying taxes. I would prefer to not pay any, quite frankly. But I recognize the value of what they do. The city where I was born, they steal the money. So they raise the taxes and they spend it to each other. And they still have clay pipes. So that city is going to die because the leadership is not fiscally responsible. Having been in the discussions on this end, having owned buildings downtown and felt that there was a common set of purposes for the city staff and the direction that the city was going as a whole, I felt like growth consumes capital in business and in, in a city. And so I am not comfortable with the idea that it costs more to our citizens to be able to achieve that growth. But if we fail to achieve some sort of continued escalation, then we don't get planned far enough in advance to build a fire department when Preston Harbor's here. There's 3,000 homes going. That's what we've done in the last decade. Our ad valorem was 2.7, and they're talking about an ad valorem of seven or eight billion for that development alone. So that's the rationale I go through. So I, thank you for your comments.
The next card I have is George Mason. Mr. Mason, would you like to come back up?
I'll add a couple of things. George Mason, I live at 2117 Park Village. If you can cut pace by comments up to this session right now, I'd appreciate it. I will say this, it looks like you're keeping a flat budget for the new year. And if you can make things work on that, I applaud you. I don't see how it's going to happen. You went over budget in 2024. It's going to happen again in 2025. You've lost some people here, some higher-up people. I was sorry to see them go. You're not going to be a whole, be able to hold on to your staff unless you can give them raises and improve things by getting more people in to help them. So I encourage you to raise the tax to the point where we can move ahead. I know the tax rate hasn't gone up for, what, five years? I don't know why that was. It probably should have because inflation's been around for more than five years. So please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the last card that I had. So now let's take anyone that wants to come up and make a comment, please. Raise your hand and, all right, thank you. Name and address, please.
Blake Vaughn, 8109 Belmont Court, North Richardson Hills, Texas, 76182. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens. I stand before you because Dennison deserves better. Better transparency, better adherence to the law, and a government that serves its citizens and not special interests. The small-town shenanigans must end. As a former Navy officer and deputy mayor in my city, I understand what it takes to serve the public. In my city, we're adopting a tax rate below the no-new-revenue rate, a victory for taxpayers. That can happen here, too. But changes have to be made. First, as a taxpayer, I demand transparency. At your last meeting, you acted on a closed-session item under the guise of attorney consultation and then voted on a resolution without proper notice. The Attorney General confirmed this was a violation of the Open Meetings Act on Tuesday following the meeting and a breach of your public trust. Your actions even opposed your own comprehensive plan and could have funded city services at no cost to the current taxpayers, yet you gave no explanation for your decision. Next, your own city charter is, you're sidestepping your own city charter by keeping a city, a city manager who doesn't live in the city. How is that the best choice for the citizens if this guy that's running the city doesn't even live in the city? Is it possible maybe he's serving special interests? I don't know. He sure talks about Preston Harbor a lot. Even worse, your police chief violated my First Amendment rights by removing me from City Hall two weeks ago for simply asking you these questions. Claiming I was harassing you, he detained me on the sidewalk out back. Ridiculous, outrageous. He claimed the sidewalk in the city street back there was not public because it's owned by the City of Dennison. Give me a break. Lastly, these sweetheart deals for developers that you're issuing, like the Preston Harbor Water Line, for example, are leaving taxpayers with massive debt being issued without public input so these developers can make hundreds of millions of dollars in profit. This abuse of certificates of obligation, issuing debt while bypassing voter approval, like you'd have to do with a general obligation bond, is unacceptable. Perhaps that's because this mayor and members of the council are backed by the developer. Go check out their contributions, their campaign contribution reports. In fact, this mayor spent nearly $100,000 on his campaign this year, all of them together, backed by this developer who created a political action committee. And then he used a slimy Austin political consulting firm, even Donald Trump hates these guys. And he won by only 150 votes against the guy who was actually calling this stuff out. That's unfortunate. Perhaps that's not what the citizens actually want. Perhaps they want change. I demand this council do better. Be transparent about your policymaking decisions. Follow the law. It's easy. This attorney even tried to intimidate me when I sent an email and she tried to say I was breaking the law. That's ridiculous. Not just, you need to do what's right for the citizens who are here, the taxpayers, not just the developers who are going to be bringing in all these people. I know you want it, but your focus should be on people who are living here now. The people living here now, not the developers who promised you all these wonderful things.
And the next, who, who would like to speak next? Somebody's out there. We've had too much feedback between last week and this. Somebody surely would like to make a comment.
Mayor Crowley, I'd like to make a comment. If you all could speak a little louder, some of us are a little hearing impaired out here. And we could hear several of these people talking.
Roll tide.
My name is Mary Karam. I live at 2117 Park Village. With that guy right there. I just have a few comments to say in behalf of everyone who is working so hard to have their voices heard. We all need to speak. And in the time that I've been here, most of the people that speak are respecting our trusted officers. And in that regard, I'd like to say that I've watched the city struggle. At the time I came to Dennison, nothing was happening. And I remember a time when we had a, a person who went through, sorry, I haven't talked up here, and I've got a lot of feeling going on inside. This is like my own hometown. But I see what happens to cities that don't move forward. When I came here, I was one of the few businesses on Main Street. In fact, a woman wrote an article about the five women that kept this town alive because nothing was happening. I believe I may have been the first person on Dennison Street, on Main Street, who put some money into their building. Most people were flipping buildings. They were making money just on old buildings that weren't going anywhere. So moving forward, we've gone through some rough roads. It seems like Dennison has gone forward a few steps and then moved back a few steps. Most of you who have been here for any period of time have watched that. We had a wonderful guy who was the city manager at that time. He was here for 25 years, a very dedicated man. His name was Larry Cruz. The sound, the town could not even afford to give raises to people at that time. After 25 years, he finally retired. And he handed the reins over to some other people. At that time, there were people who had worked for Dennison for 25 years. Some of them maybe even longer than that. And they didn't get the raises they deserved. They didn't get to have a lot of the amenities that we have now. So I've watched this town grow from one that was crumbling. Buildings were falling down, and they couldn't do anything about it. Thank goodness for the individuals who owned those buildings, put money and effort into those buildings. So then came 2008. I know I'm going over my three minutes. Came 2008. I lost about 40% of my portfolio. I wasn't the only one. But we kept our businesses open. We kept moving forward. Now we have a whole crew that works together to make this city proud. I am so proud of everything that we've done. Even though I'm one of those people that's living on fixed income, it doesn't matter because I want to stay here. Even if I did have to pay more taxes, I would still stay here. It doesn't, it's not a big deal for me to pay nine cents on a $100 valuation because I live very frugally. I don't waste my money. So for all of you who are naysayers or from outside this area, Bobby Adderbury is doing a great job. And I think every single one of you in this room is doing a great job. So let's move forward. Sorry, I took a sip.
Thank you very much, Mary. Who else would like to speak? Or exit? Anyone else? All right. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Now, I'll start off, and I would like to ask for comments from our council. First and foremost, it's never fun to have to think about raising taxes. It's never, any council, city council just does not want to do that. But we're at a point in time where we need a little help to get through this next couple of years. Someone mentioned earlier that they hoped that we would ask ourselves to not, or to be more in tune and not keep our tax rates high forever. That's totally every one of us. We do not want to see that happen. Whatever tax rate we pass will not be reduced this year, but it may be reduced next year or the year after. The council sets a tax rate each and every year. So the, the third thing, and I'll reiterate on this, but we have growth now. We have inflation, and we have high interest rates. Thank goodness, the Federal Reserve is beginning to think of lowering the interest rates, or at least that's what we all read. And hopefully, that will start coming in September, which will also help lower cost, operating cost of the city in general. Now, I'd like to invite city council members to make a point or, or give your thoughts.
Laurie, could we go back to the shopping cart front slide? There we go. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
So some thoughts, just trying to find ways to increase it less, you know, the least amount possible to be able to help us move forward, but yet not put an extra burden on our citizens. We, we hold a reserve. Our goal is 60 days reserve. As I've thought through this, you know, maybe having some wiggle room, reducing it to 55. However, as I looked at the previous slides, we're already below 55. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, it, yes.
So that essentially, if these, the budget does not include increasing that. Is that correct? Or does the budget include increasing that back up to 60?
Not to 60, no. The general operating fund, it would increase it up two days where we're at, which still puts us below the 60.
So really, we only have a day, a day wiggle room with that, right? If we were to, if we were to cap at 55 instead of 60, we really only have a day.
Because at the end of next year, it would only be 56, right?
And so there's not a whole lot. That was just my question, just trying to.
The reserve days are self-imposed, right?
Self-imposed, yes, correct, correct.
So is, is there a mandate that the state requires us to have on?
No, but GFOA best practices recommend usually 60 to 90 days or even up to 120 days. We're a little bit on the lower end. My concern is, again, if something were to happen, a day's cost is around 100, I think about 40, $145,000. So it doesn't take much to lose a day, you know, one refuse truck engine going down or, you know, some other unforeseeable event. So that's what concerns me is how quickly those days can drop due with our daily costs.
I do make, want to make a comment, but I do think the reserve is extremely important. Just, just even from an individual family standpoint, you know, Just, just even from an individual family standpoint, you know, what the financial principles are is we should have an emergency fund, right? 60 to 90 day emergency fund. And I think it's important that the city has that too. To be financially responsible, we need to have a reserve so in case we have another snowmageddon or we have, you know, or tornado comes through, whatever it may be. I think if you start lowering that too much, then we can really get.
So you said one day is about 145,000?
Uh, yes.
So one cent generates about 259,000.
I'm sorry, it's 127,000. I misspoke on that.
So 127K, um, two days is roughly 250, right?
Right.
Which equates to similar to about how much one cent would generate in revenue on an increase, correct?
Correct.
So my thoughts were, you know, if we were, and of course, I'm with you there. I'm not wanting to go down too far, but two days of reserves cost about one cent. If we were to modify the reserve days, I'm thinking that it could potentially keep us from having to go up as much on our taxes. Um, I know that the reserve days impact the ISO rating, which potentially helps our citizens save money on their taxes. I'm not taxes, I'm sorry, their insurance. I'm just trying to find ways to bring this down, you know, for our taxpayers. Uh, and, and also, I, I break it down. When I look at all of the line items, I, I see our needs versus our dreams on some of these items. And then when I look and categorize the dreams, we have our, our dreams that will generate revenue in the future. Then we have dreams that may improve aesthetics. Uh, and if we have dreams that are just here to make it look better, I think it's probably not the, the best decision to fund projects just to aesthetically make our, our city look better. It is looking great. We're doing a lot of good things right now. Um, I think it is important to, to find ways to, to fund what's going to generate revenue in the future. But as far as projects that are more of dreams to make us look better, um, sometimes I, I just, I look at it from a perspective of possibly just postponing these or tabling them from now for some of the projects that we have. That's a line item, so that's just my thoughts. Similar to the Ike Hike that we mentioned earlier.
That's a decision that council can make and we can definitely accommodate that, to reallocate that funding.
So Ike Hike was 200,000, right?
Yes, correct.
It was four. We brought it down from four to 200,000. Right. 200,000 is a little less than what one cent would bring us. But I do feel that that is something we could probably table for now in order to bring our proposed rate a little bit further down. It's my thoughts.
Other thoughts, comments?
I moved the first bill in 2001 when it was 25,000 people. And we, we invest to order the city councilman at the time and you got the opportunity to educate a 21-year-old on how, uh, how you grow a city. One of the challenges is when you have a small population, you've got expansive growth, you've got to have planner viewers. You've got to have software that works well for the developers you can, regardless of the size of the developer, whether they're a single unit or whether they're a billionaire. You have to have folks that are doing the inspections. For me, as a developer and property owner, and as the folks I generally talk to, that's the challenge is that we have out-of-town folks that are binary in the way that they address things. And so our package that is binary doesn't give you a whole lot of options. So we have allocated money in the past to correct those things. And we're getting ready to ramp up the inspection necessity group. I'd rather have those people in-house so that I can go talk to them and say, hey, that should have been something else. Or hey, come back and look at it again. Quasi-agree with the point that, uh, you know, staff that lives locally often is, uh, more interested in keeping the things moving forward. Yes, ma'am, I can.
Thank you.
Solved all the world's problems. I forgot to turn on the microphone.
Other comments? Questions? Does, any other comments, questions? Does someone have a motion to make? Not fun.
So can I approach it slightly differently?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there things on the à la carte menu that we as council can agree we're not interested in the pain that it would cause the citizenry to support that line item? Because if we start eliminating some of those, then we can get down to a number that actually accomplishes the things. Repairs to the library facility. I recognize as the son of teachers, as a teacher myself and the son of a principal, that libraries are important. However, I don't think I can ask a citizen to pay an extra couple of dollars a year to have access to that being renovated this year. What's that?
It has been a very rare thing in my life that somebody said they couldn't hear me. This is, this is going to take a minute. So the question I asked the council was, is there anything on the à la carte menu that we can start striking off? And that'll give us a sort of mathematical way of saying, all right, this is what we want to fund. This is what it's legitimately going to cost. And so I threw out the library as one item that I feel like is worth supporting. However, I don't think it's worth supporting this year at the cost to the citizens to be able to pull it off. And then I, I gave a little bit of my background to support the idea that I like libraries as a teacher or former teacher and the son of a teacher. I think we have to do the renovations at the fire station and the planning for the construction. We can't get behind the eight ball on that or we lose the momentum we've worked so hard to get. And I don't want to have to go stand in front of Chief Jackson telling that in a dark alley either. I don't have any family members buried at the cemetery. I do recognize the value of cemeteries. I don't know what the road looks like, but again, if there are citizens in Dennison that do not have family members buried in Dennison, it is to me tough to ask them to pay a dollar a month or $2 a month or whatever the number ends up being.
And we can definitely work with these numbers, like street maintenance. Um, instead of attributing 100,000, we could bring that to 75,000. Park maintenance, bring that down to 50. The reserves, you know, that's flexible. We could build one day or one and a half. It doesn't have to be an even two to three days. So there's definitely room that we can work with whatever rate that you agree upon.
I like how you opened that by saying we can reduce the street maintenance budget because that is the single biggest call collector that I get.
I mean, it would not affect the funding that was on the slide already. This is additional funding for streets, so.
Any other comments?
I want to throw this out there. I'm just doing some good DHS math right here. Shout out to Ms. Hosebog. $200,000 for the Ike Hike, let's just say hypothetically, if we, you know, used his funds to help with this. And two days' worth of reserves, if we were to consider that, is about 254,000. Totaling 454,000. And if we take that from this proposed six-cent shopping list, and we take that 454 off of that, it's about 101.1 mill, right? And at that 1.1, uh, a one cent increase generates about how much?
259.
259, right? So if we divide it by 259, um, roughly 4.2 cent increase. We could essentially get everything in the six cents column for 4.2 cents if we were to make those moves that way. So just want to throw that out there.
Other comments?
That leaves out the grant matching funds, so you get free money for spending money and the fire stations. But other than that, I think I like the plan.
I do think, um, you know, a concern I have is, I don't know if this problem will be solved in a year.
It will not.
We'll be back here next year, next year at the same place.
So then the question is, is do we raise it enough now so we don't have to raise it again next year? Or do we raise it with, with the higher chance of having to raise it again next year and be in the same position? Because I feel like it's going to be two to three years before we start seeing increased revenue and where these things get solved. And so, you know, we haven't raised taxes in five years, uh, which has been great. I'm with, uh, um, Josh in that, uh, I prefer not to raise taxes, right? But, um, I don't know if, if our citizens would like us to raise them every year. If we can have a reprieve for a year or two before we have to raise them again, I think that is a.
And I would like to comment on that regarding the Ike Hike. That funding is in a restricted fund in our streets fund. So even if we reallocate that, we can only reallocate it to streets. It would not affect the general operating fund, which is what the slide up here is displaying.
So you couldn't just remove it off the item and say, hey, it's?
Right. It's already in that restricted fund. It's already budgeted in there.
So out of these line items, are there something that you could move those funds to? Because I'm assuming that we have something on here that additional street maintenance, couldn't that be 300,000 instead of 100,000?
Road repairs in the cemetery?
Yeah.
Budget items or are those cemetery budget items?
I'm sorry, on the.
Sorry, I don't stand next to the microphone. The cemetery road repairs would fall under streets and not under parks?
No, that's, it would be under parks.
So, but you have the additional street maintenance. Would it be able to go on the second line item where it's proposed 100,000?
This funding would be in our general operating fund. Um, and then we have the Ike Hike funding. It's in a separate fund. Um, so I'm not sure exactly.
Well, you said it could only stay inside the, the street funding.
That was on that slide that I showed you. This right here is in the general operating fund.
Okay. I guess I'm still.
For like materials, for patching streets.
Of course. And so I'm still kind of confused on.
Indeed, it's confusing.
Yeah, help me break it down. So with the 200,000 Ike Hike, we could move that to a different fund on that slide that you originally showed, right?
We can move it to a different project within that same category, not to the streets in our general operating fund.
Tell me what projects it could go towards?
Um, basically overlay or sidewalks.
Projects listed here that it could go towards?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'm sure if you looked around, you might find a street that needs overlaid in Dennison.
I mean, it could go to overlay for sure, yes.
To your point, there are all sorts of opportunities for Dennison to be continued tailwinds. I think there, if you don't want growth, don't be here because it's coming and you don't have a choice. Sales tax could be better next year. It's down this year. As our population grows, we could have additional revenues that don't burden our citizens. We've got a lake that's starting to get a bunch more marketing from exactly those developers who want to make profit off of the lake's location. So I would rather not prophylactically tax. I would rather go, we did what we needed to do this year. And if the world is improved, uh, whether through the Fed or through November or through the economy or through God's grace, at some point, uh, we will be holding to the citizens to say the finish line has been met for this effort. So I would rather answer to them by going back next year and saying, we got to do it again because what we predicted happened. Then have the question go the other way.
I did want to mention, I guess, for our, our taxpaying citizens, especially homeowners. Homeowners, this past November, were able to get a additional homestead exemption. It went from 40,000 to 100,000 on the deduction. So a lot of you, if you looked at your taxes and you've seen that it's, it's cheaper than what you've normally been paying, that is something that the state of Texas did pass last November and it was implemented. A lot of you probably won't feel the burden as much if you are a homeowner. I do feel that our renters, uh, who typically aren't the ones paying as much attention are the ones that will feel the, the most impact whenever, you know, whatever decision we do decide to make. Just want to throw that out there.
Any other comments? Could I get a feel from the council if you, uh, would exclude, if you are willing to exclude 7, 8, 9, or 10% tax rates? Is that a general consensus that we do not want to go in that direction?
Yes, that is a general consensus.
Yes, I can agree with that.
All right, so we have a six-cent version on here that could be reworked through the budget by staff. And we can give them our preferences on what should, what should and could be re-adjusted. Do we have, uh, anyone that, is there consensus for a six-cent increase by anyone?
I would go for a six.
Where would the swimming pool fall in your categories so far?
Way below. That's a costly project.
I think unfortunately, that would be the project that would be put on hold.
Yes.
So. Now, you know, and we mentioned this earlier, I just, I do feel like we'll be in the same position next year. Unfortunately, I know I'm, I'm looking at, you know, what the market's doing and interest rates are constantly changing. You know, home values are slightly declining. They're not selling what they're selling for last year. And, and I'm not even sure if we'll be able to generate what we're expecting to generate based off of current values and citizens protesting their taxes. Just want to throw that out there. Don't have a solution for it. Just want to say that.
You're saying that if we did a six-cent tax increase, that we might, that might not be enough?
Essentially, you know, if, if we do have property values that decrease this next year or something.
I, I just, I just don't want to go over. If it's six cents, that's, the average homeowner would pay an extra $10.03 a month, right? I just don't want to go over six. I don't want to do anything, but we have to.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. That we, uh, I'm going to get my wording out. I moved the ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of the Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of 2 million, 2 billion, 760 million, 800,037 levying the ad valorem taxes to the City of Denison, Texas, on all property, both personal and real, in the City of Denison for the year 2024 in the amount of, oh, got to do my math now. Got to calculate. Ready to go. So it would put us up to 71, 203, 4. If I did my math right, that's adding six cents to the current 65 rate. For each 100 dollars of assessed valuation provided in the portionment of such ad valorem taxes.
Yes, that is correct. That six cents would be 0.712034.
Is there a second? It's a motion by Councilor Massey, second by Mayor Protem Adams, to go to a six-cent increase in the tax rate. Any other discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
If they say your name, please say yes or no. Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Massey?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Redwine?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Reluctantly, yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We will move forward to. Okay, um, we will move forward to item number five. Receive and hold, uh, receive report, hold discussion, and take action on the proposed Dennison Development Alliance budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Hello, it's me again. Uh, the Dennison Development Alliance, DDA, is funded primarily through Dennison's Foray Sales Tax, uh, which is a tax dedicated to retail, manufacturing, and industrial development. Um, the purpose of this tax is to help stimulate growth of our local economy. Uh, DDA, uh, the Board of Directors met and approved their fiscal year twenty-five budget on August fifteenth of twenty twenty-four, and Tony Kai, um, President and Certified Economic Developer of DDA, uh, is here this evening to present their budget to council.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Kai.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is my twenty-fourth year to present a budget, try to make it fairly simple. I know you all received this earlier in your packets, the way we do this, is we do our twenty-three, twenty-four budget that you approved last year, we lay in our twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget, and then on the far right, the difference in the numbers. So, generally, I'll just go over those items that are plus or minus in some significant way. First off, on our sales tax revenue, which is part of this whole discussion we've had tonight, it is absolutely flat, year over year, and the past years it's been up, sometimes double-digit, this year it is. No increase in sales tax, so we've not budgeted any increase in the sales tax income from our Foray sales tax. The third line down is EDA grant. As a potential income, we are qualified to apply for another million and a half dollar EDA grant to offset some of the, um, development costs of the JM property. We've done a full assessment of the JM property, and if we were to build out every road, street, grading, totally get that shovel ready for Mr. Massey to go out there and build us the building, that's about thirty-nine million dollars. So, if we can get a matching grant, uh, we also have to pay that match, but I've, if we do pers- uh, proceed to apply for that grant, if we are lucky enough to receive that grant, we also have to match it, so I've got an income, and you'll see an expense later, but anyway, that's the million five in, in our income that's different than the, in the past years. Toward the bottom of the income is property sales income, and I have a write-up in, uh, the support information for this budget. We have multiple properties in our industrial park, they're under contract, we have one major piece of property at JM that we have a letter of intent on, it is not a contract, but if all those were to close, and we were to sell those properties this coming year, uh, that would generate, uh, the three point eight million that I have on the income. And then detention structure, cost share in our industrial park, we built, um, our, a detention structure that was larger than what we needed for our properties that we sold, and the developer that we sold some property to agreed to pay his cost share amount of that total, so that's that number, a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Uh, administrative expenses, nothing there that's out of the ordinary, so we'll go down to program expenses, under workforce development. Last year we budgeted one ninety-five, a hundred and twenty thousand of that was for a matching grant with the state to build a electronics engineering technician lab at our high school, and so that grant was awarded, and we did make, make that a payment, and we do have that program in Dennison High School today for students that want to go to work in the techs- tech industry. So, we've got only four, fifty thousand budgeted in workforce this year. Property management, EDA infrastructure grant, again, that would be, um, money that we would have to pay to match the, the one five. Moving on down, infrastructure for the North Port Point Center, I just wanted to point out that this past year, we had, had spent about two point five million to get water and sewer infrastructure to the eighty-four, seventy-five property, that's been completed. The, moving further down, the North Point Center, which is the eighty-four, seventy-five property, uh, we are about to finish paying off the gas line that we have installed, so now we have all the infrastructure to that property, because we feel like it won't be long until we're gonna be doing something on that property, and that's our mission. Um, to, to the DDA office completion, I mean, this was our budget from last year for the purchase was eight twelve, and then we budgeted three ten for the remodel, and we're just in the process of doing that remodel now. Then obligated incentives, we've reduced a lot of these as far as a budget item, because we've had a lot of completion, especially on Main Street. Um, the, the very last building that had a metal facade is being finished as we speak, so I, I don't know that there's gonna be a whole lot more expense on Main Street or the downtown dis- district for our facade grants. That's about a quick summary. We have marketing budget, um, we are allowed to use ten percent of our total income off the Foray sales tax, which is two point five million, you're allowed to spend that much on marketing. We always budget that amount, but we spend less than seventy, sixty, seventy thousand a year on marketing, but we go ahead and budget it, just in case something crazy comes up and we, we need to, we need to do something in marketing that we've never done in the past, I don't know what that would be, but it's just really just a holding place for funds. With that, I would answer any questions.
Got any ideas on your marketing for this year?
We are doing a couple of different things that we've done in the past. I've hired a third-party, uh, individual from the area, he worked for TI for over thirty years, he was in charge of their supply chain, been all over the world, uh, he's got several thousand LinkedIn, uh, contacts in the, in the tech industry, so he's been working for us for a little bit over a year, so we're putting him on a monthly retainer, and, uh, we're looking at some A- AI, artificial and, um, products that, we're still doing the research on that, it's kind of new to us, but that's gonna be, I think, an important thing going forward for all of us.
What about your website?
Pardon?
Website?
Uh, we did the website about two years ago, and we continue to upgrade and, uh, keep it current as possible. But, any suggestions you have, I'd gladly take them.
I'll reach out.
Thank you.
Can the facade bucket be reallocated for fire suppression grant application?
Well, we budgeted an amount for fire suppression based on the buildings and the builders on Main Street in the downtown district that we are aware of, so we think we got that covered. But if, if, if we spend more money than that, we'll just amend the budget and come back to the council. So these are just kind of holding pots, if you will, but if there's a need, we're gonna come back to the council and say, hey, we need to get this done.
I for one am thrilled that you did the facade grants, uh, because it really has turned the downtown into a...
Uh, we started those over twenty years ago, and to date, we've done about ninety-four buildings in the downtown district.
Yep, how many, ninety-four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else, mayor?
No, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Kai?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a motion to approve the DDA budget for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'm going to approve the Dennison Development Alliance fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, uh, by Councilman Redwine, and second by Councilman Thomas. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alright, so, that, uh, that matter is approved, um, there being no further business on our agenda, uh, number, let me back up and say, we thank each of you for taking the time to come down here and be part of this exercise, it's not fun for any of us up here, but, uh, we do appreciate your comments and, and thank you for being involved. So, uh, with, uh, nothing else, there's no need for an executive committee, uh, session, so, uh, we'll move through that, and, uh, the time is seven nineteen, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.